Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery All fair and sound. Okay. Your payroll amount of $194,080 is 66 cents.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve payroll and now with $194,80, 66.
And I would second that. All fair and sound. Okay.
Use your straw yet?
No, it's too hot. We're on a little bit on there yet.
Next month is supposed to be a pretty decent day, 84.
I can't read the council table too damn much.
Okay, I'll do this one and then I'll take care of the other.
All right. We have to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims against the payroll report amount of $76,006.16.
And I make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the claims in the amount of $76,006.16.
I'm saying that all fair and sound.
Aye.
Yeah, appreciate the straw. Hopefully that grown that hard played around and we'll see.
If you run short, need a few more bail out.
All right. All right, we have a covered bridge certificate.
And this is a certificate that commissioners sign each year. There's 28 covered bridges and the county gets a reimbursement about back around 50 some thousand dollars each year.
All right, our pick up motion to approve the covered bridge certificate and sign it in the state.
And I'm second that. All fair and sound. What that's for is just to acknowledge the number of covered bridges we have so we can get the covered bridge reimbursement from the state for the maintenance.
How is the number 28?
It's the ones that are in service?
No.
Not the ones in service?
No, it is 28 because you got Billy Creek and...
Those are still owned by the county, aren't they?
No. Well, yes and no.
The county has to go on the bridge over at Waterway, doesn't it?
The ones, no, the ones over at Billy Creek, not on the road. The two that are off Beaston Bridge in Leatherwood, those are not...
They're not county property?
They are not county property, no.
They were supposed to be, but I think something...
No, they gave them to PCI because if they didn't, the county wouldn't have to maintain it because PCI was going to maintain them and then when Billy Creek broke away from PCI, they gave them to Billy Creek and that's...
You're talking about the front bridge and the very back bridge?
Yes, in Leatherwood, yes. I had a conversation with Mr. Cooper, oh, about a year or two ago, that we would take those back and we would maintain and repair them because Beaston's an old shite. And he was like, well, he would probably think it might be something to do in one little win we would get on repairing them. So I'm not going to make any promises of what we're going to repair until we get them back. I'm not going to get them back until you promise that we can leave them where they are in perpetuity. And that never occurred, so we still haven't got ownership of those bridges. And we need, to me, we need to have one.
Yeah, I meant to say absolutely. Absolutely. I can't believe that that was a lot that happened.
No, I think there's, well, out of 28, there's 19 in service.
You've got to realize PCI was a different PCI 20 years ago. PCI was active, had active membership. It was, Billy Creek was up and running and functioning and active entity, so it was not a bad idea to let them have that, let them maintain that, let them take care of it, I guess, from a commissioner's viewpoint, what the attitude on that was. And they wanted them and I guess the county didn't want to have to maintain them, so they, the promise was made that they would maintain and begin to, and that has not occurred now. It occurred for a while, but it has not occurred in recent years. And so now we need to look at getting those back into county ownership, but they're on private property, so in order to get them back to the county, we'd have to have, if we can find a, find one to do that kind of work, some of that could get us, what would that be, just a lease in perpetuity or actually...
You could have ownership with a right of way or something to it and to and from.
Okay, so something like that to get it back. I hope that...
Might be fancier ways to do it too, but...
I got nothing to speak, ask you out here in a little while. Don't forget about this involves a purple, so it's...
Okay, I was gonna bring that up to you anyway.
You got a question on that too?
Yeah, I just told you, Dan, I was gonna bring that up to you. Probably the same question I was gonna ask you.
Well, I can tell you the conversation I have with the judge concerning that type of thing, of course, we couldn't talk about that case, but we can talk about that county thing.
Certainly.
Okay. All right. West Central Solid Waste District. It's an increase of 4.7%, up $1,673, which would be $36,351. This is the agreement with West Central and that's what keeps the recycling center out at, and Bassett's now, I guess, Scotthead now.
Yes, I make a motion when you enter into the 20 or 23 group or West Central Solid Waste District.
And I would second that. It's an absolutely necessary thing for us in the county to have, if we didn't have that recycling law, that would end up in our digits someplace anyway, so...
And not just that, tox away days.
Absolutely. So I say that all fair and sound.
Aye.
Okay.
That's, that's a great thing right there.
It's a packet.
Okay. There's going to tell us, they're asking for input. I don't have any offer. Do you have any offer?
No.
Last time they closed that 759, we built a runaround for the ambulance service so the first response could get around. I don't know if that's going to be a similar case here for them to get around. I'm looking to see how long you think it's going to be shut down. I see the description of where and what, but I don't see anything about how long time it will be closed. What we're looking at is a, a bridge replacement on State Road 59. It's about a half mile north of the P-36 59 junction. It's in Greentown chip. It's a 77-foot continuous reinforced concrete slab. That carries 59 over Little Racken Creek. Their ratings are five, six, and five. It's a scale of nine, so it's fair, satisfactory, but it needs to be approved. They need to get to a condition rating of seven or better. So it's 210 feet west of the center of the structure, 210 feet east, 420 feet altogether. But I don't see anything about how long it's going to take to do it. But I don't know that that's going to be a decision maker anyway. If it's got to be done, it's got to be done.
But it don't say anything that I can see about whether they're going to totally close it or get one lane to burn or...
Nope.
Just let us know they're planning on working.
I'm guessing they will have a meeting as they have all the others. All right, we have it. Penn Township reappointment?
Penn Township called in Susan Freed.
Yes.
And she wanted to reappoint Noel Bowers.
Yes, Noel Bowers, yep. He was on vacation, he was gone, failed to file for office. The election was held, no one obviously was elected there because there was no one filing for that position. And now, it's my understanding that we can appoint someone to fill those township advisory boards if there is no elected official in place?
Assuming we're past the time period to slate anybody, yes. I don't remember what that date is, though, off the top of my head.
Let's make a motion contingent upon that and contingent upon the fact that we had passed the filing date for office. I'd make a motion that we appoint Noel Bowers to Penn Township Advisory, Township Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
I believe we have, I just don't remember what that date is.
Okay. All right, we have a proposal here for Deputy Th. It's 500 months, is that what we're paying now?
Yes, we're paying the $500 a month.
Okay, so no change, just continuation contract, yeah.
I make a motion, we agree to the proposal from Deputy Th for the $500 a month for...
Is that for a year?
Yes.
Okay.
It was one year, but I'm going to...
This is something the Platte office uses all the time.
Yeah, we're just wondering if it's a one-year contract? Yes, contingent through June 2023.
It's got an auto renewal clause in it on page two.
I would second that motion. All fair and sound.
So you gotta give 60 days notice if you want to terminate.
And then I need a signature.
That one in the bottom left must be the order. When are the budget hearings typically?
August 11.
We have a, Ryan Keller was going to come, Ryan Keller from Thrive was going to come and just discuss the, what we pay for and what we get for, but he had some health issues come up and so he's not going to make it today. So he asked if he could come up next time and I'm fine with that, just to explain what the cost of what we paid to Thrive. We've had him come before to present to us and it's always a well-needed thing, especially now that we're seeing transportation being used in Park County for the first time in a long time, so it's good to see. So let's put him on the agenda for next month's meeting on July 5th and let him present to us, then Bruce might be here as well. All right, we have a court notification here.
It's a personal injury case. Officer allegedly backed out and somebody hit the car or something. Our insurance is aware of it.
Okay. Form 144, 2020, yes.
These are all the salaries that the departments have sent in to the council for 2023 year.
Do we need to act on these to recommend them or not? I know sometimes we have.
This is just a review to let you know what's going forward to the, to the council for the budget hearing.
Then we have a payroll repayment. An employee was overpaid $1,097.06. I think he no longer works for us.
That is correct.
Been asked to repay and I think they had come to an agreement to do that, but, but that didn't happen under the circumstances.
And then on that one page on the back, you can see where, where Josh was gone and I was doing the payroll, that's after he quit and I daddie entered in the wrong amount.
Okay.
Because you can see on this paycheck stub here that it produced the full amount and only certain hours was worked.
Okay.
And I didn't realize I had to go in there manually, manually do it. It just, the computer, when I put the hours in, the computer just took the regular write-in and put it in.
Sure. Okay, well, you found it, so now we can tend to get it back. And if we're not successful, then I'm guessing small claims be the route to go.
But I think that's what she was wanting is she'd again, they have authority to go that route.
Yeah, because I sent him, I sent him this letter here attached, I sent that registered to him. I've had some phone conversations with him prior. I have texted him, I have even reached out to him. He said, he told me that once he received his perf money, that he would make that payment back. And then after, after that time, after March, I still continue to reach him, but he no longer accepts his phone calls or text messages or anything else.
That was my understanding, that he had said that he would pay it back once he got the perf, perf payment. And after that occurred, that he didn't follow up, but that's my understanding, so I'd make a recommendation and then we have our attorney go ahead and file smaller claims to be in the process.
Something about...
All fair and sound. It's always difficult when people get overpaid and that doesn't release them from the obligation to have to pay it back and make it right, so that's the way it is. Okay.
Purples?
Oh, yeah, the purples, as you know, have been, fines have been levied by the court. Judge Wayne wasn't here, another judge was in the place and they fined them, I think $2,500, I think, with fines for the two owners. And then they had so much time to work on to get it repaired, to get it fixed. Their place burned here last week, burned the second day in fact as well, it rekindled and it's completely gone. All the stuff, all the mess that they were filed against is still in place. It was my understanding that he had received an offer from one of the neighbors to buy the place. It was my understanding also that there is a $30,000 fine levied on them for the property that they, they have not paid. So I called Judge Wayne, knowing that we could not talk about that case at all, that wasn't my point. My point was, does in-like case is similar to that, is it possible if someone's offering them a certain amount of money for the property, could those fines be lifted? He said, yes, they can. And he said that you would have to file some kind of paper to do that.
Yeah, I can do that. I just need your authority to do that if the property sells, is what I was going to ask Dan about.
Yeah, the hope would be that, say he's offered $60,000 for it, 30, that would be the $30,000 from fines being lifted and then a neighbor could buy the rest of it if they agreed to a price, whatever the number might be.
We could just do a release of lien on the property, is what we could do.
Then I make that motion and we do that.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
And we did discuss the, it is...
Contingent on the property being sold.
Yeah, we're not just going out and releasing and then back out and changing.
Then let's add that to the motion then, if you would please, ladies, that made the motion that we release that contingent upon the property being sold, if it's not sold.
And I'll say...
So can you give me the authority to indicate that to the purchaser then? Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
I have an offer to purchase.
That includes you doing all things, all things necessary to accomplish. The place we kindled the next day, someone stopped while I was there, said they called 911. Purples came while I was there and they indicated that dispatch would not respond to it because it wasn't insured. Insurance company told them not to respond to it. That's all hearsay, just what I was told. So my understanding is that they were, they were aware of on fire. Okay. I don't have any other new business, I don't think, but let me make sure. In fact, I've got a voicemail here from the person who was looking to buy the property. Give me just a second, I'll listen to that and see if that's what you're asking about. Okay, you may not be doing this smoothly, I mean, we're both... I don't believe I have anything else.
So there's a couple of other paths we can go on that if that's not going to happen though, and I'd need your authority on that also though. There's a statute that allows the county to have the property cleaned up at the county's expense and attach it as a lien on the property. At that point, we would be over the threshold of what the property's half of its values were, so you could foreclose your lien on the property.
Okay.
So that's a path we could go.
Should we try this other one first and then go?
That'd be my suggestion, but I wouldn't give them a lot of rope, they've had a while now.
Do you want a motion on that, so when you go to court tomorrow?
I can tell them that's the path we're going.
That's the road we're heading now?
That's up to you guys, yeah.
Yes, I make a motion, we go ahead and give Nick the authority to continue to pursue cleaning it up if this does not go through and then put a lien against it.
And I'm second that. All in fair and sound. Okay. All right, now, I have no other new business, so old business, the R H contracts and so, that's not, that's not really it. I met with them, in fact, a couple of days ago, I'll meet with them again Friday of this week, I believe, so we'll see where we are. It's my understanding, your orthopedic side of that that we passed, that is working very well. One of the council members is participating in that at the moment, I think it's going, going very well. I don't have the old business, do you have anything else? All right, the department's sheriff, Steve here? Nope. I did talk to Randy Cleaver today, he's going to come out and get that set up, he's going to look, he said her computer is new, she just crashed not long ago, but I talked about the other two are pretty old things, see what you might need. So might even be a laptop instead of a tower, I don't know, he'll make that suggestion too. So whatever you need, we want to make sure you got what you need there. Do what you gotta do.
So this is just from milestone contractors. Bid documents enclosed for asphalt paving 2021, or 22-1 due today. And then they have three different sets of bids in here, but here's their original one
Is that for the community crossroads jobs?
Yes.
Well, I've looked at, looked at, it looks, looks good. I had a lot of the bridges that Dan said they were good, we said they finished that two, two or three block area that wasn't done yet, so that'll be completed, so those are, they're good.
Yeah, they're all, they're all complete.
Beale Road and Golf Course, you're doing some of that, we're doing some of that. When should that be done? Is that this summer or is that next summer?
This summer.
This summer, yeah, good.
We got the material made now.
Super.
Have to make sure.
In fact, I was working on Beale Road last week.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, last week we done Beale Road and 425.
Hopefully we can look at, if we can, we talked about this the other day, we can look at Strawberry Road and 10 o'clock Road, if we can get that around the 500, I don't know how long that is. How long that would run, it would be.
Well, it's three, four mile.
Okay.
Through 10 o'clock and then Strawberry Road is probably about two miles.
Two miles, about half of it, but that, that road right there.
Well, that would be the 10 o'clock roads. We need to go on down Cull or Cullman there.
Okay. Maybe we can look at that area this year.
The hill over there by, we're often use have the dairy.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. That'd be, that'd be good to look at. Another look at is that road coming out of Tanjar, you turn, turn left, had to go through Tanjar, past the old store there.
400 plus.
Is that 400? Yeah, that's what, pretty rough.
Yeah, 100, 375 and part of 1200.
Okay.
And we got some over in Greentown ship too.
Okay.
We've already got...
We're looking to finish, finish...
350.
350, yeah, yeah.
And we need to take a look at 875 east.
I don't know where that is.
I took you on it, I'm going to lose, I've got Doug Barry's.
I don't remember, slept in, yes.
Where were we all three went?
Yeah.
But 875, you're just going, that number doesn't bring it up to me.
Going north out of Hollinsburg.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, yeah, I knew we were talking about.
They had a little section to 100 north and then 900 east.
Yep, yep.
So they have a total bid of $1,157,067.10. They have it broken up into three sections. County Road 1,000 east, Greencastle Road to New Discovery is 552, 417.70. Greencastle Road, county line road to Fallen Rock Road is 479 and $98. And New Discovery Road, Martin Road going west to New Blacktop is 126,154.40 is how they have it divided up.
Okay.
And they have a bid bond in there.
Okay. All those, all those you mentioned, the roads, ever sign anything about the fact they should cover, need to fix?
Yes.
I think we're gaining on them.
Like I say, the contract payment is all done now.
Great.
21-2.
Have you had any difficulties with them at all?
No.
Good.
No, we've done a great job.
Great. What I really like is, I know they go in with a set thickness and a set width, but you get some of the curve, they got the, they raise it upwards, more level than it was and I, I know they don't have to do that, but, but I'm glad they are doing that, so they have, they look good.
They do a good job. They do a good job.
Yeah, they do.
And like I say, our paving materials made now, so it's later in here for a while. I plan to start chipping ceiling either later on this week or the first of next. I planned on starting today, but they didn't get some pit borders fixed in the trucks, can't hitcher them. Get those all fixed, and then we'll start.
Okay.
And that's all I have, if you have that for something.
I did have a question for you. The, and I know we've discussed it before, but I don't know if you've ever talked to anyone about it, or talked with any of you about it, the everbreeds that's grown out in the road on Bridgestone Road and New Discovery. Anything we could do to trim that back, or at least talk to him about taking-
Yeah, I did talk to him, he-
Right off the corner.
He wasn't really enthused about it, I said, well, you shouldn't have planted back another ten feet or so in your yard.
With it.
I don't know.
It's terrible there.
They're in the right of way, right?
Yeah, pegging over the road, we should take it down.
How far back can we take them on that?
Just our right of way.
Yeah.
But I'm asking, what, do you know what that is?
That's thirty foot right of way.
Both of those roads, New Discovery, and because it's right here in the corners.
Well, mainly on Bridgestone Road.
Yeah, but it needs to come around New Discovery some, because people, they don't stop there on New Discovery.
No.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, the guy's got the everbreeds planted on it.
Yes, and people come out New Discovery and don't stop.
You gotta take me nose way up there to be able to see, yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
I'd just tell them to trim them, but if he doesn't, we're gonna have to, and he might not like how they look.
Yeah.
That's what I told him before.
Yeah.
Do you need a, you think from the attorney, they'll write that letter to them and say-
No, let them give it another try.
Okay, okay, you need help with that, just put it on us, that's fine, I mean, that's what our job is, so.
So I can catch you and talk to you. We can probably just go back maybe about four or five feet.
Does that mean the removal of a whole tree or two, or just-
No, no, that'd just be-
Okay.
Being that, that'd look pretty nasty, and you'll take a few of them down.
Okay.
But that is thirty foot right of like, so.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
And I guess your target is if someone wanted to discuss where that actual was, and I understand the road may not be in the middle of the right of way.
That's right.
So when you're measuring, I suppose you just measure from the middle of the road, fifteen feet both ways, regardless of where the road is, that's what we're using, as long as he understands that, that, that. We understand that, I mean, I'll be accurate when they made the road a hundred years ago, but that's what we're going by, in the middle of the road.
That road should be ten feet from the center to the edge, and another side, five feet off.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
If he wants to land everything, have a survey.
Yeah, yeah.
He can pay for that.
Yeah. And, oh, I know what I wanted to do, I spoke with Randy, we have access to a grader for the county historical society museum. It's a real Adams grader, leaning wheel Adams grader, it's in the woods at this guy's property. And so we can, I got a friend who saw me get it out, my wife and I are donating one to the museum, we may go need that one too. But my son and I are gonna get it out of the woods, down with the road, and I asked, it's gonna have to be on the low boy, so I asked Randy if we could do that, load that up on the low boy and take it to the museum, and unload it there. So I just wanted to make sure that we had permission from the commissioners to use the equipment to do that with.
So if you want a motion-
I make the motion that we authorized or had Randy use the county low boy to move that grader to the museum.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll find a date, how that works out for you.
Yeah.
Be a project, he needs a project, we have nothing else to do, I understand, so. Okay. Thanks, sir.
Uh-huh, thank you. I've got a minute, Andy.
You send you guys something?
Enjoy your motorcycle ride, huh?
Yeah. Road's a lot better.
For Randy, runs away, have you guys got your roads picked out for the next community crossings?
No, we had a list left over from last year, but we're gonna look at some other things, we had not-
That should be coming up real soon, so I just wanted to get away from you.
The only one we have from the list last year is Greentownship Road.
Okay, yeah.
That was six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it's probably gonna be higher than that.
Anytime, anytime you all get together and take off and drive, some of the worst ones again, catch a rainy day or something, I know you're busy right now, except today, I'll take off and go look at some.
When's the filing?
You know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's real quick, and I know it takes time for Warren to get estimates and everything, so I wanna make sure you have an opportunity to get your roads, give him time to get the estimates before the application.
Or if you just prefer, you throw some at us, and Jim from his area, Bruce from his, and me from the south, and kinda toss them around. If it don't work with your schedule, then I can look at what they're talking about, and then look at what I'm talking about, and hash it out, however you want to do it.
Don't matter, that's pretty easy, we're just-
It was.
It worked out good with all three of us going and grading them.
Yeah. We get asked for just two hundred and some thousand this time?
We can ask for a million.
You ask for a million, then we'll ask for- How about you wanna get a million one year?
Per, per request.
And we had this talk too, Randy thinks that million includes our match, I didn't think it included our match.
That does not include your match.
We didn't get a full million from the state.
Last time they sent us back, we had to cut it back.
Yeah, he said they asked, and whoever he talked to said that's what it was, and he sent that back, but that's not my understanding, my understanding, we can get a full million.
I didn't see what you were-
We'll dig that email back out.
Yeah.
Okay, if you could, because we're gonna get it determined, I know from the commission's viewpoint, 'cause I've been in enough meetings, from our viewpoint, we can ask for a full million dollars, and we can, we can match, match on top of that, so we can do one quarter million dollars worth.
That's what I always saw, but they sent some of that back.
And I think they made a mistake on that, so I-
That's why we dropped-
Yeah, that-
One street, Tripp Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that was thirty-some thousand dollars, and that took a big chunk out of it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, let's-
I'd say we ask for a million again, see what happens.
Well, if you look at the awards, communities are receiving a million dollars.
Tim Yelkman from Man, comments all the time, he posts says that they will have better than a million dollars with the project done, because they got the million from the, from the state, and then there.
Yeah.
So it should be one point two five million, if we had to.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if the local wants to put in more money, you could do more, but yes, the minimum would be one point two, total projects.
Yes, if you, if you don't mind it, why don't you get that email to Cindy, let her check on it too, because I, I just know in my heart from my meetings that we can get a million, it's not a million unless our, our match, we get a million from them, and then our match on top of that.
Later, it's from Carla Sheets.
Didn't we get nine hundred and some thousand one year from them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that shows right there, they were nine eighty, something, yeah.
Seventeen, the latest one.
Yeah.
So, I know that one year was almost a million, almost a million, nine eighty something, and so I know that that's how they do it, otherwise they wouldn't have given us that.
Yeah, but the time we put twenty-five percent with that, that puts a swell over it, so I'd say ask for a million again and see what happens.
So that's great, I mean, I've been on these roads, I can see the improvement, I think we're gaining on them, so we just gotta keep going, but another quarter million, it's another quarter million, that's another half a mile.
That's true.
Another half mile for a quarter of a million dollars.
No, two and a half mile.
Yeah.
It's about a hundred thousand.
I know, I'm just carrying on.
Anyway, I just wanted to get that out there, that, get that rolling, so that Randy can get his estimates, and we can get that documentation.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Randy.
Uh-huh, take care, yep.
The only other thing I had, Jim, was that regarding website, so-
Oh, holler at Randy real quick, I'm sorry.
Randy, sorry, Jim asked me to holler for you again.
I'm sorry, couldn't interrupt you, before he gets away.
He's, he's something you remember.
Not nearly good-looking, though, I understand that. I did talk to Randy about if Jane didn't want, Jenny didn't want the internet access on, like any computer, she can choose to connect or not connect, so even though it's run to her desk and it's hooked up on her desk, she doesn't necessarily have to spend the whole time connected, she can pick and choose. So if she wants to check email from time to time, or if she wants to do payments there instead of the other room, that's all available. I just wanted you to make sure that she knew that, just because there doesn't mean it's connected to the internet, if the internet's not watching you all the time, or stalking you all the time, you don't have to connect to it if you don't want to.
Okay.
All right, thanks. And Yelkman, look at your computers and see what do we need to do to upgrade your, your other two.
I don't think I, unless we have to have it for that one, for the network, but I don't think mine, I don't think it.
All right, just tell him that when he comes, because that's gonna be it.
Walmart one.
Okay. All righty, thanks.
Uh-huh.
Sorry, Cindy.
That's okay. So I just wanted to give you a couple quick updates regarding website. So, you know, we've had that out, and the user testing acceptance phase to all the different departments, we've only had one department provide any feedback requesting a change on just the way that it was structured, because they kinda merged EMA and EMS together, not understanding that they were separate, so we were trying to get that separated. But that's my feedback on the website itself, credit card processing, I think by the end of this week, we'll get everybody ironed out of some things. I know Kim Shorter is still on vacation, but we've asked, you know, the other two ladies in her department to really be looking at that and try some things. So I'm hoping by the end of this week, we'll have the credit card piece nailed down, and then we'll be setting a launch date.
Okay. I was just talking with Chris, and his concern still is with the old system we have now, that we don't have any multiple authentication processes. Will we have that possibility with the website, with the state, to require more than one, not just a simple password, but what's the word for that?
Two fa- two-factor authentication.
Yeah, multi-factor, multi-factor, yeah, multi-factor authentication.
For the website?
Yes.
Why would, I don't understand why they would need it for the website.
For the payment portion.
Chris asked, so he might talk to Chris to see what he was talking about.
Well, I mean, I know what Chris is talking about, but it doesn't really have to do with using the website and for, say, if Laura chose to get trained on how to make edits to her pages, she would have a specific login for her, and just because it is through the state of Indiana, it has that two-factor authentication, because you have to go through Access Indiana, and then login to the website as an editor, so that part is there.
Okay, that's the barrier now for us getting insurance, because they don't have that multi-factor authentication, but that won't be a problem with the state, it'll have-
That's logging into your systems at their desktop, not necessarily the website.
Right, right. Well, I guess that's what I was talking about, not the website itself, but will we change it, change, because our emails are gonna be going through that.
It's when you switch your email process, if you go to the Microsoft three sixty, that's when you're gonna get your two-factor authentication. The website is not gonna give you that for the whole, like, desktop of everything that they use.
Okay.
So that's gonna come later with the other program, with the cybersecurity piece. But anyway, I know, you know, the plan was to launch early June, people still had questions, we just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable before we went anyway.
I don't know if you guys know, but I mean, Cindy has just worked so hard on this, and so long on this. We, it's begun, it's become more difficult than any of us were saw it as being, because when they were talking with the state, it was just a matter of easy stuff, and they take care of all of it and done. Now, just like more and more and more stuff comes, and Cindy takes care of all that. Cindy has agreed, in partnership with our county, has agreed that when offices do wanna make edits to their websites, they will go through her office. It's just not a matter of approving that, you can, you can't do this, you can't do that, it's just a matter of looking at the editing and all of that stuff to make sure it's a clean, clean edit when it's sent. So they have agreed to let her do that with those hours too, so just one more thing she has to do, so appreciate you, thanks. All righty, I have nothing else, did public have anything?
Make a motion, Richard?
Uh, sure. Okay.